of Representative George Lang to his newest seat as a state senator for our community. George has been serving our community for thirteen, over thirteen years now, since 2003. You began as our trustee and then in 2017 moved into the role of state representative. And in that time, our community has grown tremendously, George, in large part to your leadership. I also want to say I met George on the corner, literally, in 2013 or 13 years ago. And you've really taught me a lot about gaining a greater understanding about our community. And I want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Linda.
So we're honored tonight to be able to do this swearing in and really appreciate that you have given us the opportunity to do that in your local school district, George. We're very excited about that. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Without further ado, are you ready?
Yep.
All right. Please raise your right hand and your left hand in the Bible. I, George Lang.
I, George Lang.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge and perform.
And will faithfully discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Ohio Senate.
As a member of the Ohio Senate.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
And do this as I shall swear unto God.
And do this as I shall swear unto God.
Congratulations, George.
Thank you, Linda.
Welcome, our newest state senator. George, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, you know, I'll keep my comments very brief. I really, I'm humbled of the support that I got in the community. You know, to have gotten over 100,000 votes is a very humbling experience. And I do not take that lightly. I do not take that for granted. And I'm very thankful to everyone that has voted for me. I'm very thankful to all my volunteers. Your husband was one of the biggest ones, as you know. I'm very thankful to all my financial supporters. And I look forward to taking my business-first message. It started here in Westchester Township and has made Westchester the most affluent community in the state of Ohio. And now Butler County is vastly growing to be one of the most affluent counties. I'm looking forward to taking that state, that message, that work to the, just to the state to try to make Ohio more business-friendly than it is today. It's going to be a big push, but I'm confident we can get it done. I really like to thank my beloved friend, Don Crane. Don, you've been there with me since day one. And I hope you know how much I not only value your legal advice, but your mentorship, your political advice, your friendship. And I hope you know how much I love you. And there's one person in the world that I have to thank, and that is the most beautiful woman God ever gave the opportunity to draw a breath of air, my wife, Debbie Lang. Debbie, Linda said that we started 13 years ago in 2003. That's a Lakota math thing. That's really been 17 years now. I'm kidding, Linda's going to punch me later. But through it all, Debbie, you've been with me through the ups and the downs. And you've never wavered. You've always encouraged me to chase my dreams. And I can't thank you enough. I would ask all of the people here tonight, all of the people listening, hold me accountable. Reach out to my office if I can ever be of service. And I do look forward to being your senator for the next four years. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, George. And I know that I and my fellow board members look forward to working with you on behalf of our community. And I'll get the math right next time.
Thank you. And listen, I also want to thank my opponent for participating in the democratic process. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome to this meeting the Lakota Board of Education. As you can tell, I am not able to be present this evening with my fellow board members in person. To help kind of ease the flow of the meeting, I'm going to pass it off to Ms. Kelly Casper to lead the meeting.
Okay, great. Jenny, will you please call the hall?
This is Casper, here. This is O'Connor, here. This is Schaefer, here. Mr. Lovell.
Here.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Jenny, will you call the hall, please?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. Mr. Lovell said he doesn't have any board president's comments. We would like to mention that Mr. Pearl is not with us tonight due to a death in the family. And we would like to express our condolences and our sympathy to he and his family. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Just really quick, just to, we don't get to at the end, just to wish everybody a happy holiday. And as we get closer to the winter season, I wasn't sure if I'd have a chance to mention that later tonight and appreciate all the work that's gone into the first half of our school year, whether it's VLO or in-person. And appreciate all the community feedback and kudos to our staff for working the best that they can under such unique circumstances. So that's it.
Mrs. Lovell?
So tonight, I ask Representative Lang, our new senator, to stick around because I wanted to thank him personally for his support of substitute House Bill 305. House Bill 305 is the Fair School Funding Plan that we've been working on for over three years. And I've been privileged enough to be one of the work group members. And Representative Lang spent time with me, discussed the bill. And, you know, we had a very good conversation. And I just wanted to thank you publicly for your support of that. And just let you know, I appreciate that. And to offer, if you wanted to say any comments.
Thank you, Jenny. I do appreciate that. I think everyone knows my platform, business-first. And there's four pillars to my platform that we have to succeed. And I'll just give you one statistic, why putting business-first is so important. Fifty years ago, Ohio was rocking and rolling. The average Ohioan made 10% more than the average American. We had 24 congressmen. As you know, your number of congressmen are based on your population relative to the rest of the country. Today, we're down to 16 congressmen. We know when the census comes out, at the end of this month, next year, we're going to 15, maybe 14. That's about a 40% loss of representation. No other state has gotten beaten as bad as Ohio. And today, the average Ohioan makes 12% less than the average American. And Ohio is the fifth-most-left state in the nation. I don't mean from a political perspective, but I mean people physically leaving the state. Number one reason, people leave better economic opportunity elsewhere. And our graduates at our universities and colleges, greatest schools in the world, I believe, right here in Ohio, 60% of Ohio college graduates leave. Number one reason, better economic opportunity elsewhere. So what happened 50 years ago? We implemented the income tax, not just on corporate, on individuals, but on profits of corporations with one tax after another, a cap tax, a VAT tax. Our cap tax says if you're a corporation, you're going to pay a tax on your revenue. Forget the fact, you may have lost $4 million that year. You're going to pay taxes on a losing year. And we have driven corporations away, and the people have followed. So as I mentioned, there's four very important pillars of the Business First Caucus. I'm only going to talk briefly about one, and that is workforce development. And that's why our public schools are so important, not just to our students that you guys do an amazing service to, but to the businesses of Ohio. I'm so proud of the work Lakota's done with the four Es. And that's what we have to focus on. It's not always more education. We need workforce, people ready to do all aspects. And I'm glad that in your four Es, you include entrepreneurialship. Because a lot of public schools, profit is a bad word, and entrepreneurialship is a bad word. So real proud of the work that Lakota's doing. And I'm proud to support the efforts to support our businesses. One big concern with the bill, you and I have talked it, I won't bore you with the details, but hopefully we can get that addressed in the next GA.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Fuller, student spotlight.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry about that technical difficulties. Tonight, we're celebrating not one, not two, but three sets of champions. It was a great fall for many of our cross-country runners. We have two state champion teams, the Lakota West High School Boys Team and the Lakota East Junior School Boys Team. Additionally, we have a member of the West Junior Schools Girls Team who brought home a national title.
We started training pretty seriously overall as a team after we finished last year, after we got seventh and missed fourth by, or eighth and missed fourth by the state by a couple of spots.
We felt we were good enough. We were right on the bubble, but we felt we were good enough to make it. And we didn't. And that was crushing, crushing to me, but more importantly, crushing to those boys.
Actually, this year, we knew there was going to be a whole new load of doctors along with just regular injuries and staying healthy and whatnot.
With COVID, it's a totally different year. We're harping on them to stay six feet away, do this, do that. And these kids, they just, they were following. They were fantastic.
So we had to make sure that a lot of us were staying distanced in classrooms and stuff so that we couldn't get a two-week quarantine.
And it started with our first meeting there against Moeller where they came out and I think we surprised everybody.
Beat in August, not beat, beat San Antonio State, so that's really no problem.
So it was kind of nice going into the state meet knowing, we want to do something special here. We just need to come out and be ourselves, just have a good day and bring home the state title. And that's exactly what we did.
I don't know. It was pretty close. Like, we won by two points, so it was a very narrow margin. There was definitely a minute or two where I was like, this is not real. Like, there's nowhere, this is perfect. But so just standing there, it's kind of like just watching back all the weeks. So just thinking, like, how it all paid off. Once the trophy came in, it was just sighing relief, just knowing that it all, you know, mother worked it. So this is the first time we've got this day. And I get to feel like we're taking the path, like the future runners.
And they earned everything they got. So congratulations, guys. You deserve this.
They had a fantastic year, but they didn't know they were as good as they were until they ran in the state championship.
It felt great to win the state championship. You know, obviously, we didn't win GFCs, so it was really nice to win at the national.
We, I think our whole team was honestly hoping for a podium spot, but we were honestly thinking probably like third.
It was just really exciting, like thrilling, because the coach just kept it a surprise from us that we actually won.
And once it got to like second and third, we just figured we hadn't gotten on the podium.
We had to say, hey, guys, if you win, you have to be last. And then they didn't start coming up to us at all. And so it really was a great moment.
I had been like a difficult season with COVID. And I thought that was like a really nice reward for all the extra we tried to do.
It was really cool to see all of our hard work just pay off in the end.
It was like, never give up, like, keep trying, like, keep going, keep moving.
We're kind of like the motto to the future runners, to try to do what we did.
Biggest takeaway one kids to get is that they can accomplish anything.
I've been running since third grade. I first joined, that's when I first joined the Girls in the Run program. I love to run because it's really accomplishing and it just makes me feel good. And then I definitely wanted to beat my PR. And I wanted to get under 1145, not too low. I beat that pretty handily. I got 1136.
That's a, and she's, she doesn't take a backseat because she's a girl. She will run just as fast as, you know, those girls.
At state, I was really hoping to win. I got third, which is still good.
After a state meet, she was disappointed. And she called Coach Rick Madison and said, hey, could you give me some sprint work outs?
But when I went to nationals, honestly, I wasn't even sure if I would race at first. But once the race started and I was in the top six at the very beginning, I knew I could win it.
So a little bit shorter, so she just treated it like a sprint. And she wore people from Texas and Illinois down. And people that normally wouldn't, I would just run away with them and pass most of the boys. She, I think, finished 15th overall, even with the boys starting in that order.
Felt really good. I had a huge smile on my face. They didn't put out the tape though. So that was disappointing. They couldn't catch me in time.
That's awesome. Especially in all of the things they've had to endure with the mask. I don't think I could run in a mask. Okay, this is our first opportunity for public comment. The public comments must address agenda items. Remember to state your name and your address, and you have three minutes. And I believe we do the email ones first, is that correct? And Betsy has some.
Yes, there's no one present in the meeting.
Right, because there's nobody, there's, yes, since there's no one in the room.
So we had four emailed comments. I can only read three, though, because one did not include an address with them. So the first one that I'll read is from Michelle Moody, 4718 Gilford Lane, Westchester, 45069. I have two questions for the board tonight. First, if the vote is approved to start the second semester virtually, will sports and extracurricular activities still be able to meet in person? Second, can you share statistics about the change in VLO versus in-person for second semester? How many students are moving from VLO to in-person and vice versa? Thank you for all your hard work and dedication. The second one is from James Snyder, 6587 Gray Birch Knoll. The comments contained here in reference agenda items 8A and 9B, which regard the return to learning for the second semester of this school year. This is the first time I have ever submitted a comment for the public, for the meeting, and appreciate the ability to do so. I want to thank Mr. Miller and the administration, as well as the school board, for doing their best to navigate the challenges that 2020 and COVID have presented. On December 9, 2020, the district sent an email out regarding the return for the second semester. This communication provided some results from a recent community survey, as well as a recommendation being presented at today's meeting regarding the schedules for return after the holiday break. Specifically, the recommendation appears to have been, appears to have a week of virtual learning, January 5 through 8, followed by a staggered day return the following week, January 11 through 15. This recommendation is concerning to me and as I have talked with. I want to encourage the board to not approve this recommendation, as I think it is misguided. The following items are important points for the reasoning behind my request. One, all the evidence I have seen suggests that in-person learning produces the best outcomes for students, whether academically or socially. The district has allowed this to happen, for those willing, this school year. I know for myself and many of our friends and neighbors, this has been a far better outcome for our kids and the virtual learning that has been offered when required. It is better not only for academic achievement, but for social development, mental health, and physical health. Because of this, in-person learning should be offered to the fullest extent possible, including return to the classroom on January 5 as scheduled. Two, I believe that parents generally have the most knowledge to make decisions that serve the best interest of their children. In the recent survey sent out, parents spoke overwhelmingly in favor of return to in-person learning, 48% of the responses per the December 9 email versus only 23% for the next closest category. The proposal being put The proposal being put forth by the administration ignores the guidance, and I believe this is a grievous mistake. In fact, to make the selection being proposed would, would be to select the option that parents clearly said was the worst of the three options presented. It is also not very popular with teacher or student populations. To have asked for guidance from the community and then effectively choose them to ignore it is offensive. Three, aside from the general issues with remote learning and the unpopular approach to being proposed, the staggered return January 11 through 15 is of independent and particular concern. This approach is not popular with any parent or employee of the district I have spoken to. From a parent perspective, I've heard many say that this is choppy and difficult to coordinate for parents and students. Further, developing routine is important for student success, and this does not, and this does the opposite. What I've heard from both teachers and students is that this setup back in the fall was a colossal waste of time and not productive. Based on the information, I would ask that even a remote start is considered despite, that even if a remote start is considered despite the date of birth. That three minutes was up.
Just a reminder that we only allow three minutes. So at the three-minute mark, if Betsy's not finished reading, she will stop.
And the last one is from Valerie Hobbs, 9876 Creekstone Lane. Members of the board, Mr. Miller, Mrs. Logan. I was very disappointed to hear Mr. Miller's decision regarding the second semester. I wanted to share my thoughts with you. Mr. Miller, you have said multiple times that in-person learning is best for students' mental health. I beg to differ. As we enter our 18th week of in-person learning, my first grader's teacher is in quarantine again. She came home on Friday and told me she had a sub, but she was sure her teacher would be back on Monday. I had to let her know that her teacher would not be back until after winter break, as she was in quarantine. My seven-year-old sobbed and asked me if her teacher had COVID and if she was going to die. Before my student returned to this, to school, she knew very little about COVID. Now she hears stories daily from classmates whose family members are in the hospital or have died. This is one of my greatest fears. What will I do if one of my children loses a teacher or classmate to COVID? How will I help them cope? As this is at least her teacher's second quarantine, there's been a steady stream of subs in my students' classroom. And only does this impact her mental health with anxiety with a new person, I wonder what kind of impact it is having on her education. There's been no consistency in her learning as her teacher has been in and out of the classroom. I understand there's this, there's a sub shortage statewide. If we were remote, then their teachers would still be able to teach through remote learning. I wonder what message the district, school, and teachers sending to my children. We are there for you and we can be. You are not important enough to have a teacher, so we will just send a recess aid to base at you while you work online. If that is the education that is occurring in the building, my children are better at home. I have serious concerns about the staff across the district. According to the email that was sent, 30% wanted to do remote learning until February 15. This was the most popular choice among staff. I have questions regarding why the staff chose this option. I know why I did. I feel that as a district, we have a duty to our community, hospital, and first responders to do all, to do all can to flatten the curve. Well, it has been said multiple times that there is no school transmission that simply cannot be true. Students sit three feet apart from each other for seven hours a day. We still allow sports and even choir concerts to occur. Both my students, my first grader and my fifth grader, have said that their teachers are tired and grumpy. I must wonder if they are stressed and overwhelmed by the sheer volume of work that is piled at their feet right now. Are they teaching both in-person students and the students that are in quarantine? As of today, you have had over 390 students positive and over 4,400 students in quarantine. I cannot imagine the expectations that you're putting on your teachers and wonder how their mental health is. I also wonder what kind of retention rate you will have for next year. Right now, there are excellent educators in Lakota, but if you burn them out, what will we be left with? Please don't allow the amazing talent with this district to seek different opportunities. To conclude, I feel that the best decision for students, staff, and community is to have remote learning through February 15, and I beg the board to make this decision. And that was our last one.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fuller. Adam, do we have anybody online? Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Miller, would you like to address those?
I will take a few of these the best I can. First off, I think that was pretty much a synopsis of, of, you know, a lot of feelings and emotion, and everyone's opinion just in some ways is correct. And so we have the, we think everyone should be all in, and we have the ones that everyone should be remote. And so that's part of the issues that we are facing and are trying to make the best decisions that we can. And I want to reiterate, too, that we put the survey out to get some information from our parents, from our staff, from our students, which is one piece in the decision-making process. And so I want to reiterate that as well. To Mrs. Moody's question, we have, as of today, about 950 students coming back in person versus the 4,000 that we have virtual now. So of the 4,000, 950 will be coming back again, subject to change. And then she asked about going the other way. We have about 100 students, a little less than 100 students that want to go VLO. So net, it's about 850. But again, those can change, and VLO, the VLO team is working with parents who do want to use that as an option or as a choice. So I want to put that out there. To Mr. Snyder's comments, just a, just a couple of things. The, the reason why we wanted to go remote is we wanted to, in the beginning, is to get 10 days away from New Year's Eve events. We understand when our kids have some idle time, they're going to get together. But we also have seen, because of Halloween slash election days and now Thanksgiving, we see a huge uptick in positive cases and in quarantine. So our thinking is we wanted to get at least 10 days away from January 1. And that was the rationale why we wanted to go remote. And as far as a staggered start goes, I've heard the opposite in terms of people coming and starting the school year. They liked how we transitioned in. Plus, we have to transition 950 VLO students to in-person learning in the middle of a pandemic who have not been masked up in their school setting and socially distanced. So that doesn't come without some logistics as well. So that's the rationale for remote the first week essentially, and then a staggered start Tuesday through Friday, the following week, and then all back in on Tuesday, which is the day after MLK Day. To Mrs. Hobbs' email, I kind of addressed it sort of at the beginning. I would really encourage her to take a look at her VLO option, that she thinks that's in the best interest of her children. Certainly reach out to that team, and they can help make that accommodate you. I would also say, too, that I know that our teachers have done a fantastic job, and they are emotionally drained. So when kids are saying they might be grumpy and things like that, I don't think that's everybody, but I certainly get that we all have our moments in time, and so it's certainly understandable.
Mrs. Moody also asked the question, if we go remote, when we go remote that week, will they still be doing in-person activities?
We're still doing in-person activities, correct. And so athletics, band, those types of things, those things that have been going on will still go on.
Okay, thank you.
And also, there was also a reference that we had over 4,000 people out quarantined, and I'm not, I don't know what the cumulative number is, but I know looking at the dashboard for this last week, we have 768 students quarantined, 87 positive. So I just want to make sure that people who aren't looking at the dashboard, I know that's just the weekly snapshot, but don't think we have 4,000, over 4,000 currently quarantined.
We, we don't. So that's a good point. And the, and the COVID response team, Mr. Vogelmann, Mr. Kramer, Mrs. Fuller are on that, along with some other people have been working on the dashboard, and it comes out every Monday. We're looking at perhaps a live, not live, but a daily snapshot, too. So we're building that out as well, because that'll give some more real-time information. The other thing, I want to talk to my superintendent colleagues around, around the area in Ohio and across the country. Quite frankly, one of the other things that they have seen is when you do take a 10-day or a week break from, with our, you know, super spreader events like holidays, they're able to stay in session 10 days away from that. So one of our colleagues did that after Thanksgiving. I think it worked out for them. One of the concerns I think we have moving forward is what does the positivity rate and quarantine numbers look like coming back from Christmas or winter breaks? So that'll be interesting for us to take a look at. Obviously, if people are positive during winter break, they wouldn't report that to us. They would report that to the Butler County Health Department, and then we would pick up after we're back in session on the 11th or 12th of January.
I know you had said if we had any concerns in a particular school or building, you would address that. Do you have any specific hotspot concerns right now for a school, building, or grade level?
We, we just had one pop-up today, as a matter of fact, and it would impact four staff members and six students in a unit in one of our buildings. And so essentially, that, that, those 10 people will be quarantined. It's contained in that spot. We've had some preschool issues earlier in the year, but right now. I mean, I, I also think, too, that the study that we're working with Ohio State on has helped keep our numbers low, and they've been very receptive. They're, they're going to be finished with that study. The last time they're going to be in our district is Wednesday, if I have that correct. Wednesday is the last day that they're going to be at East and West. And so we're thankful to be a part of that. It helps some of our kids and some of our staff members out. I know that of the first 1,000 students statewide that are a part of that study, 11 were positive. But they weren't showing symptoms. They were just caught in the quarantine, and so you're talking 1%.
And that's at the state level. That's not us. We don't know.
Statewide, that's statewide. That's not just us.
That wasn't us.
From my knowledge, we have one person, and I haven't, I haven't heard an update lately, so that might have changed. We had one person that ended up testing positive, and it was actually a staff member in the control group. I wasn't even part of the regular study. But that may, that may, that may have changed.
I think the public comments are a really fine example of how disparate the views are, the best approach here, and certainly concerns from parents and staff and students and, and community members. I hear from them quite often, what are you doing? And I think there was validity to many of the comments on all sides of the coins.
I agree.
So I appreciate that people are speaking up and participating in that process. I do want to say I have a question or maybe a concern about our process on the public comments. I had asked a while back if the board could be sent the comments prior to the meeting. And that has not happened, but still appreciate being able to see those prior to the meeting. Some of those may go over the three-minute point, but at the same time, I would certainly like to hear all of the concerns that were expressed.
I did forward those this afternoon, the ones that we had gotten in by 4 o'clock. I did forward it to everybody. Yeah, so they should be in your email.
Okay.
But there was one that, for whatever reason, did not come to me, but Brad got it. So that one, I'll forward that one on as well, but you should have the rest of them in your email.
Thank you.
Yep, they were there. I got them. Okay, board reports, community engagement.
We had a community conversation on diversity, and we do not have any other additional community conversations scheduled.
Matt had a coffee chat. Yes. I think that's really all. We have nothing else scheduled, so that's all we have in community engagement. Other tech, Jules?
We actually have our next Butler Tech meeting tomorrow. Since we last met, we haven't had a meeting, so I don't have anything new to report. We were going to have, they have an annual meeting typically for prior board members at Butler Tech that got canceled, given the current situation. So I do not have anything new to report currently with Butler Tech.
Thank you. Legislative, I've left my legislative notes at home, Linda, so this is all you already. The pressure's on.
I think I can handle it. At the federal level, I just found this an item of interest. The research arm of the Department of Education is called the Institute of Education Sciences, and they've announced plans to launch an operation, reverse the loss. And what they're looking to identify are promising practices that are going to help with what we're understanding about learning loss for our students. And really, I think it's high time that we've done that. They're looking for tools, they're collecting data, and especially looking at marginalized and at-risk students, including special needs, and what kind of extra supports do they need in their learning recovery? So that was nice to see that that's becoming a focus for the Department of Education. In terms of the state level, quite a bit happening with our lame duck session. Jenny has notified us about 305, and I know she'll be talking further about that in just a moment, and also Senate Bill 376. And that's the Senate version and where that stands. I'll do that one for you, Jenny. I've been in several meetings and legislative updates lately, so I'll just make these brief. Leadership in the House and Senate for the next assembly will be Matt Hudson as the Senate President and Representative Bob Cupp in the House. House Bill 404 passed with several COVID-related items, including an extension of the open meetings flexibility that we are still able to meet because of the continuing concern about the pandemic. Until July 1, we're able to meet virtually using technology, so that's great. House Bill 123 is coming up. I think it's in committee now, talking about building threat assessment teams. It's a safety issue for schools. Senate Bill 358 is in the works, but there are several items that were not addressed in 404, and that's still looking at graduation and assessment, grade-reading guarantee and report cards. So there's still more work to be done on some of those issues that have not been addressed yet. And one for us to keep an eye on that we actually haven't talked about, Jenny, but I'm sure you're aware of Senate Bill 212, and that was the NDA designations that could be used to set up property tax exemptions within neighborhoods. So I think it's something for us to watch and to be aware of. The administration government wines office has presented the capital budget proposal in the House. It's a $2 billion package, and they have released the capital projects for higher education, but still waiting for the community list to come out. And Matt, will you talk about OD's update on educator evaluations tonight?
I can probably do a better job with that at January.
Okay.
If you don't mind. I have a Bassel legislative meeting, and part of that is directly in regards to that tomorrow.
Okay. I think the board would probably appreciate an update on that when we can. In other news, the Ohio School Board Association Board of Trustees met on November 21 for, for our Zoom meeting, covered a lot of different information, financial reports, updates, and report on the legislative platform, debriefing of the Capitol Conference, and update on NSBA legislative update, and a look back at 2020, which was an interesting presentation. Also, just to remind the board, for Capitol Conference, there are still 90 presentations available until December 31. A lot of good information there worth taking a look at if you haven't had a chance to do that. NSBA Southwest Regional Conference, I'm sorry, Southwest Executive Committee met virtually on December 1. I also was part of an OEPI, which Jenny was part of their annual meeting, and that went into an in-depth analysis on the voucher bill, House Bill 305, student wellness and success funding, and many, many other issues. And as always, Howard Frieder is amazing to listen to his grasp of school funding is always. It's, it's very, very informative. I want to remind the board that it is time again, if we are choosing to participate in the A to Z School Board Evaluation Checklist, we have copies of that here tonight, which I can, I won't stand up and do that now, but I'll pass them out to you all tonight. Those will need to be turned in by February 10. So we'll need to put that on our meeting agenda if we're going to have a conversation about that. And finally, the State Board of Education is meeting today and tomorrow. Jenny, do you want to update us on all the work you've been doing?
So since we met, House Bill, substitute House Bill 305 was voted out of committee, out of the House Finance Committee, 32 to 0 in favor. It then went to the House floor and was approved with 90% passage rate. That final count was 87 to 9. It, and I, of course, was tuned in and watching everything. And if you watched it, it was definitely a bipartisan effort. I mean, there were people on both sides of the aisle who were giving testimony in support of the bill. So it was very nice to see. We have also provided testimony in the Senate Finance Committee. But in discussions with Chairman Dolan in the Senate Finance Committee, because of COVID, they are not scheduling more hearings. So we really were, were also impacted by, by all of that with just timing. Timing, their time, timing was not, it was just not on our side. So this general assembly will end at the end of this month, which means all bills that were not finalized will die at the end of this month. So substitute House Bill 305. So substitute House Bill three oh five and Senate Bill three seventy-six will cease. But that does not mean that the effort does not cease. Linda already mentioned that Representative Cup will continue as Speaker. He has already stated he's not done, you know, that we're going to continue. And you'll see this come back up again very shortly in January. We're also dealing with a biennial budget where our governor will be presenting his budget proposal in February. So that's why we really wanted to get this in place before we start into the whole budget process. It didn't happen, but we, we still had a huge win. And I, I think sometimes you get a little disappointed and you get so frustrated. We pulled together a press conference within twenty-four hours in southwest Ohio, which was quite amazing. We got really good press and, and the goal of that was really just to keep the positive momentum going, to keep it at the forefront. And Representative Lang said it tonight, he said, I want you to hold me responsible. And, and that is true. We need to hold our representatives, senators in Columbus. We need to communicate with them. We need to let them know why things are important to us. I know he, you know, referenced, you know, just because his number one thing is, is businesses and small businesses. He sees that connection with, with workforce development. And so, you know, education reaches into that. And so while you think, well, gosh, you know, that person in Columbus really isn't, they're really not into education. I really don't, you know, no, you need to make the time, you need to communicate, they need to hear from you. It is important. So while we're, we're disappointed, we will continue the fight because it's a worthy fight. It's the right fight. And we'll, we'll keep on going. So that's, that's the update on that.
I know we've said this before, Jenny, but it bears repeating that we are so grateful to have you as part of that team. All you've done, not only for Lakota, but for public education across the state.
Very, very grateful. I appreciate it, but I consider myself the lucky one to be asked to be part of it. And to be able to take Lakota and to be in the room, you know, representing the community in the school district while we're developing that. I, I feel blessed and honored, so, but thank you.
Mr. Lovell, do you have any facilities updates?
Yeah, we sure do. We had a meeting this past Friday. It was our second meeting in the kind of reboot series of facilities planning. If you remember, we obviously stopped the process during COVID, but we wanted to wanted to reengage the process a bit. And so we had a meeting, we played catch-up a bit. And one of the things that came out of that meeting, which I think is probably most critical is that we believe and we know that we need to have a meeting with the entire Board of Work Session in January. And the goal of that meeting will really be to review kind of the options that we had decided on or had actually come to last spring prior to COVID. Have a discussion to kind of about where we've gone on this journey since March to really determine whether or not we believe those options are really a viable option to then get back to work with the, with the group. And so I would just request from this board that in January, we find a time when we build out our new schedule to have a work session to really talk a little bit more in depth about the facilities plan and some of the options that we had been talking about prior to COVID. Matt, Jenny, or Matt was there. Do you have any other thoughts to add?
No, I think, I think you're right, Mr. Lovell. I think, I think we'll get some information too, when we talk back to with Tracy Richter coming up and, and sort of like pick up where we left off. But we have to have those conversations even in the midst of a pandemic about what direction we need to go, so.
The only other thing to put on the radar of the board is that we're going to have to have a conversation about the ALP agreement again. We're coming up to the point where that agreement has expired or will be expiring. And so that's something that the board's going to have to have another discussion about. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller, I apologize for cutting you off. Did you have something else you want to say?
Legislative meeting tomorrow, I'll bring it back some more info on the evaluation piece. I do want you to know, and I think I put it in my, my last update that I'm working with AASA and Bassa on the social emotional piece, the equity piece, but also what the restart's going to look like once we come out of the pandemic. So to Mrs. O'Connor's point before, that's really obviously important for all of us in terms of our kids, no matter what situation they're learning in. So that's coming too. And there's going to be some work with the US Department of that on that too.
That's it.
That's it.
Can I ask one question? Do we have any update on where teachers will fall on getting access to any inoculation or having, if they are so inclined?
That, that's a great question. So essentially they're going to be, I believe it's what they're calling one B in the rollout. Essentially, one B is the third tier, so to speak. First responders, hospital workers. And then those people that have really compromised conditions, the elderly, things like that. And then after that, I think our teachers and staff will be part of that. Talking with the Health Department, we had our last meeting with them, our latest meeting with them was last Thursday. And so we are talking about utilizing schools potentially for a vaccination spot or location. Just as a reminder, this vaccine is going to require two shots at least thirty days apart from my understanding. And one of the frustrating parts, not frustrating, but one of the realities that we're going to have to face is that second shot for some of our staff members probably won't come until July, August or September. And so hopefully it's June or July, but the way it's being rolled out to us is that second dose might not be until late summer and the beginning of the school year. So we're hoping that it's earlier than that. I think we're all trying to rush towards that. Hopefully, since that is pretty far off, that maybe it, it is sped up and hopefully things continue to progress and people are responding well to the shots, but we'll see, we'll see what happens. Our students will be after that, just because their, their immune systems don't seem to be as affected as much as the adults.
Two questions.
Sure.
So that delay in the second shot doesn't affect the efficacy of, of the vaccine? Normally there's a timeframe.
Yeah, come, come on out. I don't, I don't know that answer. I'm just sharing with you what the Health Commissioner shared with us on Thursday. That, that, e- even at some point, I think we are resigning ourselves to the fact that we're going to be in this situation for this whole school year, whatever that looks like, whether it's the status quo where we're at now or if we have to pull back and go remote because numbers are going up. I think we are gearing up to hopefully having somewhat of a normal school year, next school year.
So the delay though, I think, and I might misunderstand what you're saying. The delay is just because of when they'll get the shot in the spring. You're still not going to go past the thirty days, correct? That, which you were wondering, that's what I was, it's, I was wondering about.
Many times when there's a second shot for some kind of a vaccine, there has to, there's a specific type.
Window, yeah.
Right, that's what I was getting to.
There's like, there's like.
Not because of anything we were doing.
Right, no, no, I.
I also would have a question as a parent, if I heard we're going to use the schools as a vaccination place. That will not happen without parent approval or parents being present or whatever.
Really, it's for the public. It wouldn't be so much school-based. So they, UC Health has asked for two locations. Talked with Chris Passard about that. They want to drive through, drive up, drive through location and an inside location. If that ends up being what we do, and that won't be until, you know, late winter probably. So I know UC Health is trying to, to be one of those sites.
I just didn't want there to be any misunderstanding that that would be directed toward our students.
So, no, it's really a community outward facing. We're just hosting.
Yeah.
The location.
Kind of like election.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure, good question.
Okay, that brings us to new business and everybody bring your calendars because we need to set a date and a time for the org meeting. So. Jenny, what are parameters that we're required to have it done by?
Well, you have to have it by the fifteenth, so.
So should we stick with January eleventh, the second Monday? And are we going to do an org meeting and a regular business meeting like we've done in the past? Or are we going to try to do two?
I would recommend one or I would suggest one, but just to make it easier.
So could we stick then with our normal second Monday, which is the eleventh? How does that look for everyone? It works for me.
Works for me.
Yep.
Me, I have nothing on my calendar currently. Mrs. O'Connor, does that work for you?
It's fine, I think we need to verify with Mr. Pearl.
We'll reach out to Mr. Pearl.
Yep.
Okay, well, that was easy, provided that Mr. Pearl can join us. We'll put it temporary and I'll, I'll send him an email tomorrow or a couple of days, let him get through.
Just a clarification point, one of the trusted medical advisors who was watching this just texted me and said, generally with immunizations, there is a minimum but no maximum timeframe for a series of immunizations.
There you go. Wow. We got medical professionals on.
We had consultants.
Right. Who knows, he's got a team. Okay, administrative report, Matt, you're up first.
Yep, and, and I kind of already alluded to it, but I did leave at your place a copy of the communication that went out to our parents and to our staff about the second semester rollout plan. And obviously there's, and we heard it tonight, there's no clear path or no one direction that we should take. We obviously took into account the feedback we got from our community and the surveys, but also clearly the medical professionals have weighed in and those that have gone before us in terms of what's worked after, you know, congregate time. In our case, it would be New Year's, and so we're trying to get away from that. So my recommendation, which I'm going to ask for a vote on, not right now, but on the action items coming up would be, and just to recap, Monday, January fourth is a PD day for staff. No students at all. And then Tuesday, January fifth through Friday, January eighth, it would be remote learning for in-person. And VLO students would begin their second semester as normal. And then Monday, July eleventh is also a remote learning day. And the reason why we have that is when we do the reintegration back into school, we get to have an even amount of days. So remote on January eleventh, Tuesday, January twelfth would be for half of our students. And that's listed in detail there in terms of last names. So those students would be Tuesday, Thursday, the other half would be Wednesday, Friday. We have Martin Luther King Day on Monday, January eighteenth. And then Tuesday, January nineteenth would be back to in-person learning for those families that have elected that instead of VLO.
Any questions for Mr. Miller?
And again, we are still watching. So even I'm going to ask you to approve this tonight, if that's your, your decision. We will obviously base a change in a numbers that come back or the health community reaching out to us saying winter break, Christmas, New Year's was terrible, you need to hold off. We would obviously make a change in plans at that point.
I, I found it interesting, I aggregated between the parents, staff and students. If you look at return to in-person learning and aggregate those percentages, it's ninety-two percent for just keeping status quo. If you look at staying remote through February fifteenth, it's ninety-one percent. So I'd say that's within a margin of error of being exactly the same. So I thought that that was interesting, that those numbers, and again, different people make different choices, but in aggregate, they were pretty much exactly the same. I think it's really smart to stay away from New Year's because I think if we tried to come back as it's planned now, we'd end up with so many people out in quarantine and so many staff out in quarantine. We would probably end up having to go remote by necessity rather than by choice. And I feel like this, we're controlling our own destiny and being proactive rather than reactive, so.
That ties into one of the things that sticks in my head. One of my superintendent colleagues that shared with me last week that they took, they did a remote week after Thanksgiving. And he said, that's kept us in now. And if we didn't, we would be out. And so, you know, there, there are days that, you know, the numbers, we're not sure, but we're at least looking at them every single day, so.
Hey, Matt, do you know the nine hundred-ish students that are coming back, are they spread pretty equally across the divisions or are they?
They, they, actually they are. I asked that today and they pretty much are, but we are still, I want to put this out there too, that if a, a parent is still unsure, like especially like the last comment today, I would encourage them to reach out to VLO because we're able to make some more shifts if somebody is concerned. But to your question, Brad, yes.
Okay.
How many staff are we bringing back to come with them to make sure class assignments are appropriate?
I will, I will get that, I will get that for you. We're obviously still in a state of flux.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah, the biggest piece of feedback I've been getting with the planner, at least I hear is not necessarily with week one, but with the transition week coming back and how hard that is on families to be able to manage the shift in schedule. But with that being said, if we've got nearly, you know, nine hundred plus students, almost a thousand students coming back that haven't been in the classroom, I think you did a great job of articulating the need to stagger them in, to get them reacquainted with the cultures of the buildings, the expectations and just the management of the room with more bodies. So appreciate that.
Well, and we do have concerns too with class sizes. And so this gives us a little bit of time to make sure that we, we write size as much as we can. And different buildings have different floor plans and footprints, and so we're considering all that too.
Appreciate it.
Do we have a permanent sub in every building?
We do, correct. I believe, yes. Yep. And that's been helpful.
I think everyone's aware of this, but I, it's a good reminder to remember that this is a balancing act in so many ways with so many different factors, including your most daily communication with the Public Health Department, which has a tremendous influence on what we're doing as well. So appreciate the balancing act and I feel like many times our job on the school board of everybody's a little unhappy. You've probably right, reached the right balance to things. So appreciate the difficulty of it and also trying to do what's best for kids. I do believe they need to be in person as much as we can make that happen.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that you're trying to make that happen.
Good team effort.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that you look at all angles, not just one thing or, you know, you look at multiple areas that help you make the decision as a team. There's no easy answers, we've been saying that all year, there's no perfect answer.
There's not.
Now, we're just trying to do the best we can for kids. Mrs. Logan, if you're finished, Mr. Miller, I don't want to catch you on again. This is Logan.
So I have good news to report, don't we need sometimes, some days myself? Maybe I'm just speaking for myself, but I need some good news. And twenty twenty has, we've had enough difficult stuff. So just like some of us individually are looking at refinancing our mortgages on our own homes, the district has debt and we have looked at this low interest market and proceeded with the refinancing, the refunding of some of our debt. So I wanted to kind of just recap that for you tonight. And I know Adam has the presentation and he's got it out there for Zoom, but I put copies here for, for all of you. So just to talk about that goal, well, first of all, it's to, to lower the interest expense that we have as a district. That's your number one goal. I also always put a trigger there, like, you know, a four percent on that present value savings is just kind of a market goal. Some people have three percent, I've used four percent. And you're going to see what we achieved, we achieved well beyond that. And then I also looked at, could we restructure our debt like we did with the last refunding where we paid off some debt early? And you're going to be able to, and on the next page, we're going to talk about what were the results of that. And so I'm happy to report the results were better than we anticipated. We saved over six million dollars in interest expense. I'm going to repeat that. Six million dollars in interest expense. And our goal was a four percent present value savings. We had two different issues that we refunded. One is a UTGO, an unlimited tax general obligation bond. What that is, is when we actually have a, a bond issue on the ballot that is specific for debt. That's an unlimited tax general obligation bond. The other one is actually pledged by our, our Permanent Improvement Fund, but it is not. but it is not a direct bond issue on the ballot. So that one is considered a limited tax general obligation bond. So with the first one, we received the final count. It was a 16% savings, and that one is a direct savings to the taxpayers. And then the LTGO, the one that's our permanent improvement fund, is paying at 14.2% savings, which equates to an average savings on interest of $161,000 annually. So that's money that we can put towards things, you know, that we very much need. And I know Mr. Wesley is listening on the technology side. That would help us with our remote work that we've been doing. And also, we were able to accelerate debt payments, which I think is huge. So the final payout on the debt was 2033, and we were able to move that five years sooner to 2028. So yay. The next page just kind of breaks down that savings. And that this first page is that debt that is backed by the bond issue. And so you're going to see those negative numbers, the red numbers, but that's the restructuring, moving more debt up. And I've got a graph here to kind of show all the debt, so you can kind of see how some of them.
Jenny loves graphs.
Yeah, I do love graphs. And so you can see here in that column where it shows the savings, this issue, 4.2, I'm going to round, 4.2 million dollars in savings. If you go to the next page, the PI debt, 2.2 million dollars in savings. And you can see that, and that one goes out to 2034. The next page, the chart, which, which I like, I like pictures. I love numbers, but I think pictures show a better story. So when you look at this chart, you can see the kind of grayish bar was our structure of debt prior to the refunding. So you can see in 2027, it dipped down, then it dipped down again in 2028 for two years, and then it went back up in 2030. Kind of a little odd in the way that it was structured. So the way that now it will work is we tried to even out those years. And so after 2028, you will see that our debt annual payments will drop down from 2000, in 2029, and remained flat to about $600,000 annually a year. It was going to reduce in half, but now we've been able to restructure and move that, which I think benefits all of us. The last page just is a snapshot to just kind of show you all of our outstanding debt, so that you can see it here when it expires, what our average annual debt service payments look like. And also, I also want to state that our bond effective millage, so the millage we're actually collecting to pay for that debt that's backed by bond issues that were actually put on the ballot. We're, we are collecting two mills, and that was four mills just a few short years ago. And so those have been reduced by two mills, two years in a row. So this has played into any time we reduce interest rates or interest expense, it does play into that as well as the growth in our, the value of the property in our community. So, so that's the good news I wanted to share tonight, and I think it is some really good news. And I'm happy to share it. Happy to, in 2020. Yes, with finances on a high note, so there you go.
So Jenny, you'd sort of alluded to it, when the property value goes up, how does that help people with their millage?
So the way that the bond issue works is you vote in a bond issue, and it's, it's an estimate of how many mills it will take to pay that annual debt service. So the reason why it's called an unlimited tax general obligation is the county auditor has to collect whatever it takes to make that debt service payments. Whereas the value of the property increases, and then we have more value here, that millage can be rolled back and reduced because, and everybody pays a lesser piece of that. So that kind of explains a little bit. But over the years, it does get reduced and rolled back as our value increases. And we do have something called House Bill 920 in the state of Ohio, which kind of limits things on how millage is calculated as well, so that, you know, inflationary increases don't really work the way that they do in other states. But yeah, as the value of the property increases in the community, that millage can be rolled back, and everybody benefits from that. So we are, we are blessed to live in a community where it's, we're seeing some very healthy increases in the value in the community. So I know we've, we've talked before about what that increase looks like for our six-year revaluation. So, yeah.
We needed a boo on this, Jenny.
Right, a Christmas present. Any other questions or comments for Jenny? Mr. Level, do you have anything?
No, just thank you, thank you, thank you, Jenny, for you and your team always looking out to see how you can not only save the district money, but help save the taxpayers' money on the backend, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
It's good work.
Okay, we are now to the point where board action items, our first item that we need to approve is offering Mr. Miller a new five-year contract. So do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I, sorry, if somebody else will go before me. Okay, sorry. You know, I just want to take a moment and opportunity. I know my other board members have some, I'm sure, some things that they want to state about Mr. Miller's leadership. And, you know, I think that over and over and over again, how extremely lucky we are as a district to have Mr. Miller and have his leadership, and I know he's blushing right now, and so he doesn't like to be talked about. But I do want to take a moment. I've captured just some thoughts about some of the things that Matt has done while here in Lakota. And I do want to say though, before I start reading some of these off, you know, Matt is always quick to say that whenever we talk about accomplishments or things the district's doing or things that he's done, that he has an incredible team behind him. And there's no doubt about that, you know, but I also know, we also know, that leadership starts at the top. And it's his leadership that drives a lot of this. And again, don't want to discredit the leadership of Jenny as well, but we're talking about Matt right now, Jenny, so sorry about that. But so I just want to read off a few things for everybody tonight. So first off, some of the things that Matt has brought to our system. Lakota Office of Diversity Inclusion, or LODI, supports our diverse makeup of students. Not only that, he had the Portier Lakota Graduate, the work on that is a guide for our teachers to help prepare students beginning in kindergarten to follow one of the four E's after graduation. Matt has worked to support the four E's, the annual military commencement ceremony, the Lakota Cyber Academy, which is preparing students for the future in cybersecurity, and also the Incubator EDU, preparing the next generation of entrepreneurs. Matt also believes in collaboration to prove oneself in education. Our staff is encouraged to collaborate with one another, not just in their teams or buildings, but across the district. Lakota has become just the second school district in the state to be accepted into the prestigious League of Innovative Schools, the other district being his previous one. We signed the Future Ready Pledge under Mr. Miller's leadership because he believes our students deserve a personalized student-centered education. Both the League of Future Ready Schools, along with our membership in ISTI, provides ample opportunities for professional development for our staff, as well as the opportunity to collaborate with other districts and leaders across the country to bring change to education. And he also understands the importance of partnering with our local businesses, as, as very evident by the effort and work that we've gotten off the ground through our experience ships and programs that we have here at the district. I also want to just throw out too, not only has he done some, has he done some phenomenal work within our district and moving, moving our students' education and our teachers' professional growth forward. He's also been recognized at both the state and national levels. Mr. Miller currently serves on the State Superintendent's Advisory Board and the Governor's School Safety Committee. In addition, he was recently named Lead Advisor for the Future Ready Schools Leadership Advisory Team. Lakota was recently just one of three districts in the country to receive the 2020 ISTI Distinguished District Award. He was awarded the 2019 Corporate Tech and Innovative Award winner presented by ComSpark and the 2019 National Communication Technology Award for Students for NSPRA, the National School Public Publication Relations Association. We could go on and on and on with things that Matt has done, from reaching our community to, to working with our staff, working with us as a board and our students, most importantly. But I just wanted to take a few minutes just to capture some of those things that we could put down on paper to share with not only the community, but embarrass Mr. Miller just a little bit. So I'll pass it off to the rest of the board.
Well, thank you, Mr. Level. He is now as red as his hair, so. Any other comments from the board?
I'll be a little more succinct than Mr. Level and just say, keep up the great work. I've really appreciated on all levels what you've done and look forward to seeing what you're going to do next.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, when you came in and interviewed, there was a different energy that you brought to the interview with your backpack. We knew there was something different when you walked in with your backpack. And you've brought that energy forward, and it was what the district needed. And I think you were absolutely the right choice then and continue to be the right choice now. So I am thrilled that you are willing to extend your tenure here. And again, the way we shifted and where we were headed and the enthusiasm you brought, how immediately every student in this district knew who you were and recognized you and engaged with you was phenomenal. And how people were saying that they wish their kids weren't graduating so they could participate, and what this district was now offering was a tribute to what you brought to the table. So it is a pleasure to be able to vote on this contract, and I'm thankful for what you will bring to not only our staff, our students, and our community for where we can go going forward. Wish, we all wish we didn't have this pandemic, to have this blip in the road, which certainly we all wish we didn't have to deal with right now. But I know it'll be just a blip and we'll come out flying even higher on the other side with things we've learned and grown and go even further.
Thank you.
I think my fellow board members have said it all, so I will just say ditto on again, thank you, and we are honored to have you here. So Mrs. Logan, will you please call the roll?
This is Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Level? Mr. Level?
Nope, my internet cut out there for a second. Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Sorry for the awkward moment.
After all that accolades, he says nothing. That was priceless.
Right?
I just want to thank.
Oh, yes, sorry.
I honestly feel fortunate, and I'm not just saying that you already voted, so I can say that now. But I just feel very fortunate to be at Lakota and can think of nothing better to retire from Lakota and appreciate the faith that you have in me and knowing that I'm going to do the best job that I can and blessed to work with a fabulous team, one member who is sitting right next to me. And it's, you know, this is a, this is a big ship, it's a big job, and it takes a lot of people to steer. And so I'm blessed with a great team and staff, all staff, teachers and from, from all our buildings. So can't do it without, without all of us. So thank you. I appreciate your vote of confidence, and I want you to know that I'll work as hard as I can to continue to do great things hopefully for, for our schools.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our second item is recommendation, Matt's recommendation for second semester opening. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. I don't think there's a perfect solution. I think this is a balance and hope that you'll be open and have your staff open to people who have particular concerns about their student and their family, so they can reach out and have those discussions with you.
For sure. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, I do actually have one more question on, is there any special provision for special education?
That's a great question. So Andrea Longworth and her team is working on an individual basis with some of our kids that during that remote week to make sure that there are some contact there. Not all of our kids, but the ones with the most severe needs. So it's on a case-by-case basis. If we do go remote, there's going to be more of a collaborative effort to bring some of those kids actually in if we do have to go full-time remote. But there is some, some things working.
Thank you.
Sure. Good question.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Logan, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
This is O'Connor?
Yes.
This is Schaefer?
Yes.
This is Casper?
Yes. That brings us to treasure recommendation, A through C. Do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Jenny, can you please call the roll?
This is Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
This is O'Connor?
Yes.
This is Casper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Section 11 Superintendent's Recommendation Action Items, Personnel Items, Program of Studies, which hasn't changed from last year, second meeting of our policies and approval of donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on any of those?
I think it's good that we didn't make changes to the program of studies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At this point in time.
Not the year to do that.
Stability in the systems really.
Right.
Right. Can you call the roll, Jenny?
This is Schaefer?
Yes.
This is O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
This is Casper?
Yes.
Thank you.
This brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Again, your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. Mr. Zink, is there anyone? Is it Red Key? Can you unmute Mrs. Red Key?
Is it unmuted?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay, this is not really a question, but just to commend Mr. Miller after speaking.
Can you state your name and your address, please?
Yeah, sorry about that. Lee Red Key at 6609 Chesty Drive, West Chester, 45069. And it's just a comment to Mr. Miller. After speaking with many residents in our community over the past six months, I have to tell you, Matt, I have received many, many positive responses and feedback about your job and how you've led Lakota School District. So I just wanted to let you know from the community, people love you, they appreciate you, and just keep up the good work.
That's very nice.
Thank you, Mrs. Red Key.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yep, you sure can. Go ahead.
Okay, it's Vanessa Wells, 4487 Aspen Drive, Liberty Township. I'm going to be quick tonight. I just wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Lang. And also to note that as a parent and small business owner, we own multiple small businesses in our home. We appreciate all of his hard work and everything that he does for community and the district and our kids. And so just a thank you to him, and I also wanted to thank you all for putting in, you know, countless hours for the kids, and we all appreciate that. The last thing, second, you know, can we please have some clarification? The last thing, second, you know, can we please have some clarification on the decision to go back to all virtual board meetings? I've been in person to as many of these as I can, as you all know. And there has always been the ability to socially distant from other people. So how is this any different from the students being gathered in a classroom with their teachers? You know, as it being in a board meeting, how is that any different than the classroom situation? So I guess I'm looking for some clarification there. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Zink? That's all. Do you want to, well, Mrs. Red Key commented to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Red Key. It was way, way too nice of you. I really, really appreciate that.
As far as do we, you want to address Mrs. Wells? I mean, the conversation was based on the fact that with cases rising and the governor talking about no more than ten people in a room, that we just thought that it was for safety reasons. It's not a permanent thing. It's not something as far as we discussed, it was just at this moment in time for this meeting with cases rising as well as they were as also being in accordance with the governor's ten-person minimum. It's not to say that come January, we won't be back to in person.
Kelly, I'd just like to add to that, too, that just as a reminder to our community, you know, we don't allow outside visitors into any of our buildings. We control, we're a, because we're in session and we're able to stay in sessions because we're able to control the environment. And so because our board meetings are held in the school, part of the conversation there is with because of the heightened risk around COVID right now with the increase in cases and everything like that. We decided that not only the governor's governor's recommendation, but also because we don't currently let visitors into our buildings, we thought this would be a better way and a safer way heading into the holidays to approach it. But to Mrs. Casper's point, it doesn't mean that they'll be this way in January. I think that we just need to be very aware of the cases and what things are looking like. It'd be every bit of my intention for our organizational meeting to have the community back in.
Do you want to add anything to that?
No, you hit it.
Yeah, I think you guys hit hit it. And I also just kind of ask other colleagues what they were doing. I think it's it's the gamut out there. I mean, there are some folks, I know Liberty Township, they're meeting completely virtually. Then you've got some school districts that are doing exactly like what we're doing. I think Westchester Township, I asked them, and I think they're still doing they're meeting in person with a small number of of public allowed. So there's all kinds of combinations happening out there. And I think it's just like we talked about with the decisions for second semester. I I think that you're you're seeing a lot of of different decisions. And again, we're trying to do, make the best decision that we think at this time. And like Mr. Level said, hopefully, fingers crossed, in January, we'll be able to go back, right?
I will say that in the interest of transparency and accountability backed our community, I would have preferred to do in person as we're doing and also allow a small number. It could be limited, but also allow a small number. I'm not sure why we made that change, but the board was not pulled on that before it happened.
Well, this is a decision made by the committee, again, for the purpose of cases arising and trying to be safe and healthy.
Yeah, and I I just want to say, too, I don't think that we can even the word transparency in the midst of this conversation because we by far go the extra mile with our public participation, not only through our thought exchanges that we do out in the community, through our superintendent coffees, through our community conversations. But when you look at just the board meeting alone, we allow, which most districts and local municipalities don't allow, we allow emails by four PM to be submitted for public comment. We allow people to participate by Zoom. We allow two different opportunities on our agenda for public participation. And so when we're talking transparency, just because we won't, a a a body won't be accessed into the room. I'm on the other side right now. I can hear everything you're saying. I can participate and so can the fifty-eight people that are on here. So I am fine having a conversation, whether it's appropriate or not, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to say that transparency is not happening because we're not allowing people to be in the room.
And again, as I indicated, that was my preference and stating my preference and my opinion on it. And I certainly appreciate all the things that we do to be transparent. I don't think we can do too much to be transparent and accountable.
Okay, that brings us to closing comments. We'll start with you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Okay. Appreciate Mr. Lang being here tonight, talking about workforce development. I certainly think, again, as he said, I don't think we can have a healthy economy in the state of Ohio without healthy schools. So I appreciate that that tie-in and talking about how important fixing school funding will be and and making sure we take care of that that pillar. I also want to recognize the anniversary of Sandy Hook today. I think that was hard to believe that I believe it was eight years ago that that happened. Congratulations on the state of the school talk last week. We didn't talk about that, I guess we probably should have with community engagement. So nice job on that. And thank you to all the staff and students that participated in that this last week. And then just as we go into the holidays, everyone, I hope they're able to unplug and enjoy and spend time with their family and recharge and get that restful time that everyone needs after what's been a crazy, crazy fall. I don't think anyone ever, if they had bet on us in August, I think there are very few people that would have put odds on us making it to still being in person. And again, I know it's through very much through the hard work and efforts of the entire team. As Mr. Miller is fond of saying, it did not happen easily. But I think it's been in the best interest of all the students, and I appreciate everyone who has been able to make that happen. So thank you for all the hard lifting that's been done to make that happen. So that's it. Mrs. O'Connor?
Congratulations to Representative Lang. We have had countless, I literally couldn't give you a number of conversations about education and the importance of education to our community, to our state and to our nation, and particularly on workforce development and how we're preparing our students for their future careers. Great conversations and look forward to this continuing into the future. And thank you all for agreeing to have that here tonight. I think that was important that his dedication to our community was recognized by his local school district. So appreciate that. Condolences to Mr. Pearl. It's very hard around the holidays to lose a beloved family member and very much feel for him and hope that he's back with us shortly. And to Mr. Level, I hope that you're also back with us shortly and that your family does well. I echo Julie's sentiment about time to recharge and looking forward to family traditions and Christmas time together and hope that everyone has that opportunity, whether traveling or staying home, to be safe, to find a few moments of peace and joy throughout the holidays. And congratulations to our Lakota student winners. That's wonderful to see that kind of student achievement in the midst of so many other issues going on. So congratulations to them.
Mr. Level?
Oh, yes. A couple of things. First off, just want to echo the sentiments of Mrs. O'Connor and Mrs. Schaefer. I think that as we think about going into winter break, we know that we all need to have a kind of hard reboot, a reset, just to kind of decompress a little. And I just want to throw out, and I know we've said this before, but you know, being in the amount of time that we've been in has been on the backs of our teachers, our staff, our administrators. And so we are really thankful for them and everything they're doing. It's not easy in the midst of not find, being able to find subs, keeping things going. I know that our family and many other families, when it comes to in-person, are thankful and to our VLO teachers. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all the effort that you're putting in the countless hours and really building something, something phenomenal for our students and families. I also want to thank Representative Lang for being being here, and I truly look forward to working alongside him, not only to support public education at the state level, because I believe that is critical. We believe that it's critical, but also supporting Lakota schools locally as well.
Mrs. Logan?
Congrats to Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
On his contract. Sorry, you're going to have to stick around and work with me a little bit longer. So that's.
Glad to be here.
Been a dime camera. On record.
Best thing I heard all night.
Yeah, I I know how much you absolutely despise people taking time to talk about you and and the attention is on you. You always like to to push that attention to others, but but I I'm I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you. Also, thank you, you know, as we round the corner on two thousand twenty here, and I think we're all ready to put a check mark to that. And I think Julie said it, you know, there's things we're learning that we're going to take with us that this year has taught us, and they're they're positive things that we need to, I'm trying to hang on to those positive things. And there were a lot of positives. Our our students and parents, how how they've they've had to, you know, bob and weave and and adjust and pivot. I think pivot is one of those words that we overuse, but but to pivot and to look at things differently and and to keep on moving and and to all our educators, the teachers, our instructional aides, the people who are feeding our kids. Wow, how different that has had to be this year. The the folks driving the buses, the people cleaning, it's it's taken all of us, my staff included, enrolling of students and and the business side of things. I mean, really, we need to look back on this year and say, wow, we have really, all of us have really carried a lot and we have achieved a lot. And I do think a lot of people counted us out and would have never bet that we would have still been in school this long, and we're all exhausted and tired and we need to recharge. But I also think that we need to, all of us, say good job. We've we've done some things really well. And so that's it. Thank you to everybody. And happy holidays.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, to all of that. We are very fortunate here just to provide different opportunities for our kids. And I think, too, that we know that this has been hard on on everybody, on our teachers, on our staff, on our parents, on our kids. When we talk about making decisions and making choices and there's no clear path, but one of the things that is sort of refreshing, for lack of a better term, is how resilient our kids have been, and our kids are still learning from great teachers and great staff members and still being fed and transported and the best way we can right now. But our if we were looking back in August about what are the, you know, the benchmarks of of whether or not this was the right decision, I think it's just seeing our kids still learning, still achieving, still doing great things in different types of settings. So while the conditions might not be what we want them, our kids are still doing the best that they can. And so that's been, it's been great. So happy holidays and everyone needs to unplug.
Yes, I'm just going to do everything everyone said. Welcome to, you know, congratulations to Matt. We're excited. We got to have Senator Lang here. Our teachers, our students, everyone is wonderful. We want all of you to have a great holiday. I do want one special shout out because I'm looking at her. Mrs. Fuller and also the COVID response team, that they must have the most thankless job, the COVID response team, tracking all of that. But also Mrs. Fuller and her team on what they have accomplished as far as communication with the district in what is a crazy, crazy time. So I've been looking at her all night, so I wanted to give her a special shout out to her and her team. So everybody have a great holiday. We will now need a motion to go into, enter into executive session for the purpose of preparing for, conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees considering their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. I will need a motion, but before I get a motion, we will not be doing anything after we leave executive session. So could I have a motion? So moved. Second? Logan, will you call the roll?
This is O'Connor?
Yes.
This is Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. Thank you for joining us.